I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening everyone. Call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the February 17, 2015, regular meeting, and have a motion to do so. Motion by Ann Marie. Second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? On the chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number five. Action in lieu of recess special town meeting from March 3, 2015, at 6:45 PM regarding emergency transfer for snow materials in overtime. We have a resolution which I will read. Whereas, the winter of 2014-15 has included numerous snow and ice storms as well as record-breaking cold weather, and whereas, the town of Seymour budgeted funds sufficient to cover the cost of snow removal for the typical Connecticut winter, and whereas the budgeted funds will, excuse me, budgeted funds have and/or will be exhausted, and whereas, it is necessary to provide sufficient funds to remove the snow. Now therefore be resolved that the total sum of $131,076.96 be transferred from contingency, $50,000, and the fund balance, $81,076.96, to the following accounts. Snow plowing, $103,122.57. Snow plowing overtime, $23,363.47. Social Security, $1,787.31. And retirement, $2,803.62. For a total of $131,076.96. I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. For the first selectment report, I'm going to do a quick little snippet of what I did for the Board of Finance on last week when I presented my budget. So I'll read through this. I'll try to skim through it as quickly as I possibly can. Last week, I presented my budget to the Board of Finance, and during that time, I gave a quick state-of-the-town-type review to let them know where we stand financially. I wanted to share some of that information with all of you as well. Overall, the town is in very good financial shape. While mill rate is still higher than I would like to see, our overall core financials continue to improve. As you know, in April of 2014, S&amp;P raised the town's bond rating to its highest-ever level at double A-plus. That rating puts us just one level below the highest bond rating available. In giving us this rating, they mentioned our strong management practices, conservative budgeting approach, and our disciplined debt planning. They were also very impressed with the continued growth of our fund balance and the positive changes to our debt ratio from previous years. Our fund balance currently sits at $4,581,173, which is 8.7% of our general budget. This number is up from the $2,897,989, or 5.91%, we were at just four short years ago. S&amp;P has a desired fund balance level of 10%, which we will continue working toward. As I have in my last board budget presentations, I have again asked the Board of Finance to increase our town's fund balance minimum. This year, I've asked them to raise it from 8% to 8.5. Our debt service ratio currently sits at 8.94%. 7.13 is general obligation debt, while 1.81 is WPCA debt. As discussed in previous meetings, our debt ratio will remain flat for the next two budget years, and will then start to drop dramatically for fiscal year 2018, when we shed close to $370,000 in principal and interest payments. This downward trend will continue through the next several years, calving off in fiscal year 2021, with the shedding of over $1.2 million of principal and interest payments. With this year's budget, our capital plan will now be fully funded. The town will have the ability to purchase $300,000 worth of capital equipment each year, with no impact to the mill rate going forward. A proactive road program is in place and growing each year, which will allow us to start to properly maintain our roads. Successful contract negotiations have been completed with all four municipal unions that have moved all Town of Seymour employees, both municipal and board education, off of the old and extremely expensive health insurance plans to newer, more cost-effective plans. These changes will save the town over $350,000 a year in insurance premium costs. All of these changes, to name a few, have had a very positive impact on the town that will allow us to have a tremendous amount of financial flexibility in the years to come. While there is certainly much more work to be done, we have done exactly what we set out to do, which was to rebuild and strengthen our town's financial foundation and allow us to move forward on a proper financial footing. So that closes the first selectment report. Okay, item number seven. Discussion, take possible action on fire department and Seymour Ambulance Association tax abatements. Okay, in front of you, you have the abatements for all three groups. Citizens Engine, Great Hill Hose, and Seymour Ambulance Association. So I believe that Rory double-checked this year to make sure that we have no duplicates like we found last year. So everything should be as presented. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to provide the tax abatement as presented to the qualified members of Citizens Engine Company, Great Hill Hose Company, and Seymour Ambulance Association.
Second.
Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
What are the totals?
Okay.
What are the totals of all the abatements?
Monetary?
Yeah.
Oh, we just have to add it up. I didn't take the time to add it up. Fifty-five.
But is this still going out where they have to claim it on their taxes?
I'd say until it's about 70 grand. About. To be honest, I never added it up. As far as I know, yes.
It's a full amount of payment and they have to pay on the other side.
Definitely on their taxes. I know that the, along those lines, that they are looking at making changes to this process. My fire commissioner talked about it as more of a recruitment tool. Plus, some of the members, Seymour ambulance folks, may also be volunteer firemen. So they can qualify on both. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. Discuss and take possible action on building department fee structure. Our building inspector, Baldwin, is not with us today, so we will move that to our next scheduled meeting. Item number nine. Discussion, take possible action on Greenway Trail Design Services amendments. This is the contract between Mylone McGroom and the Town of Seymour for the design of Phase One of the Greenway Trail. Rich has worked pretty closely with the folks, Mike Joyce, at Mylone McGroom. So Rich, I'll turn this over to you for any comment.
It is a functional document. They made the changes that were requested through the document. Specifically, there were issues with the dispute resolution mechanism that they had in the document. They had a, they had something that doesn't exist. They had a binding mediation. I don't know if you heard that before, but anyone else? Then we picked that out, maybe the initial district of Ansonia, Wilford, and they agreed to that. They made every change that we requested through the document. There were plenty of questions.
So would the appropriate motion be, assuming there's no questions from any of the members, to allow me to sign any and all paperwork associated with this amendment?
Would the motion be to approve the contract and authorize your first election to enter it on behalf of the county?
Can I have a motion then, as Rich had just mentioned? Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie, or, excuse me, Nicole. Is there any questions, comments? If all goes well, we'll hopefully be breaking ground late spring, early summer on this project. Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 10. Discussion, take possible action regarding engineering contract for Seymour High School Athletic Complex Project. At this point, we won't be taking any action, but just under the discussion portion of it. Brian Leclerc in Rich's office has been going back and forth with Jim Galligan, just finalizing the contract. There's a few additional pieces of information that Brian would like to see that Jim is working on getting that done. I spoke with Jim yesterday, asking if we took no action today without effect the timeline in any way. Jim assured me that it would not. In speaking with Brian, they expect to have this in front of us for our next meeting, which, again, we're projecting to be April 7. Okay, so with that, I'll open her up to any questions or comments.
I have a question.
Good.
I know that there has been a request to move graduation from the high school to the middle school so that they can work on the field. Is that an accurate?
That is correct.
The kids are very much opposed. Moving graduation from their building.
It's one of those things, unfortunately.
Alternatively, you don't have to have it in the auditorium. You won't be able to get as many people in it.
Yeah.
It's not, it's a little weird though.
Yeah, so they're not sure that it will be at the middle school. But I mean, both, Nicole's the chairman and Paul's on the committee, so they're probably better suited to answer questions than I.
Well, I mean, as of right now, our, my opinion was possibly move it to, is it Spahnheimer Field? Where the concession stand is, and then bring some bleachers in. Because this way, you're still outside on the field. You still have the ability to bring the people that you want to bring. This way, you're not limiting people to inside.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Right. I mean, that was always our first option. We never said, we were just, initially, we were throwing different places out. We could move it to the middle school. We could move it, but we, the first one was bring in bleachers and go there. But also too, you know, every year, you have the possibility of having grad students.
Indoor, yes.
Because of rain. Realistically, you could.
I know that.
I would say it doesn't happen, you know, we're lucky with the weather, but hopefully, that's our, I think that's our first spot, is to keep it outside right next door.
Okay, I just wanted to convey to you, since I've been subbing.
Yes.
That the kids are very unhappy about it.
It's consensus of all the members, is we want to keep it as close to the high schools as we can.
And outside.
Yeah.
Is our first choice, yeah.
Look at that. That was nice. I didn't have to answer that one. I like that.
What?
I like that. It was nice.
He was happy he didn't have to answer.
Yes, that's nice.
Oh.
Defer.
You're welcome.
So, but you know, it is a tough situation, because trying to get the field done and accommodate both sides. If, I think if they had, they kept graduation there, then you'd have on the other side.
Right.
The seniors.
I understand both sides of it. I just wanted to convey.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely.
What the kids are saying to me.
Thank you.
No, that's a good, that's good to hear. Kind of boots on the ground. All right, and item number 11. Update from the Ordinance Committee. I gave a quick update at our last meeting, myself, Nicole, and Karen Metz, and we worked on the four ordinances. Ordinance one is for delinquent taxpayers. Ordinance two is the veterans' tax exemption, 100% disabled veterans. Ordinance three has to deal with the fire department. And then ordinance four is an update to the sidewalk ordinances. After meeting, the three of us meeting with Rich, Rich wrote up some ordinances, which we've all looked at. The next step in the process that the three of us agreed, we think would be most beneficial, would be to send these ordinances out to the residents as written, to get their feedback and their opinion. At that point, once we have that, the selectmen can weigh in, give us some more direction. The three of us will take it back. We will sharpen these ordinances up a little bit with Rich, and then we should have them ready for presentation. The one of greatest importance, I think, and ladies, correct me if I'm wrong, the one for the veterans' tax exemption, we want to make sure that that is ready to go and enforced by July 1. We should have plenty of time to do that. Not that the other ordinances are not as important, but obviously, we want to make sure that's in effect for the new year. So, does anybody have any comments, just in general, on the ordinances that they see? I think they're pretty straightforward. I think the three of us were in agreement with just about everything.
Yep.
Nothing really controversial in there at all. Again, if you do have any comments or questions, I mean, please let any one of the three of us know, and we will certainly do our best to address those for you. Okay, item number 12. Set special town meeting for Tuesday, April 7, at 6:00 PM in the Norma Drummer Room regarding ordinance changes. Okay, can I have a motion to set a special town meeting for Tuesday, April 7, at 6:00 PM in the Norma Drummer Room of the Seymour Town Hall to discuss the ordinances related to, and I should read them, right, Rich? Delinquent taxpayers. Number two is an ordinance establishing an additional property tax exemption for 100% disabled veterans. Ordinance three is with regards to the fire department, Section 621 for officers and members, and Section 622 enlistment and qualification of volunteers. And ordinance number four, Section 14-6 dealing with sidewalks. Motion by Karen, second by Len. Is there any discussion, Rich?
Yes. I think there is a little bit of a misunderstanding. I'm wondering if you're going to use this. I don't think you might have set a special town meeting.
Oh, public hearing. Public hearing. All right, so can we amend the motion from town meeting to public hearing? All right, so Karen, so you'll amend your motion?
I amend my motion.
And Len? Okay, so Karen will amend, and Len will amend as well. So that will read public hearing. Thank you for that correction, Rich. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 13. Set special town meeting for Tuesday, April 7, at 6:50 PM regarding settlement agreement and application applicable, excuse me, amendments to MSW agreement presented by BRRFOC. Just under a little discussion for answer the motion. There's some legal paperwork that needs to be addressed by the board, which was presented to myself by Mark Bobbin, who was the executive director of Bristol Resources. That information was reviewed by Rich. Rich has asked that the board, that we take this course first by town meeting, and if we were to receive no one at the town meeting, then the board would take necessary action. Rich, you want to give any more information at this point, or no?
Not at this time, other than to say that the state statute requires the, the number of special towns to come to the MSW.
Okay, if there's no other questions and comments, then I'll entertain a motion to set a special town meeting for Tuesday, April 7, at 6:50 PM regarding settlement agreement and applicable amendments to the MSW agreement presented by Bristol Resources. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? So, second by Len? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to go out of order and to skip item, temporarily skip item 14 and move down to item 15. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 15, appointments. You can pull on our appointment list. We have several to go through. Okay, Michael Flynn, Inland Wetlands Commission, it's appointment. It's a four-year term. It expires March 3, 2019. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Paul. Let's see, there's a lot of excitement for you, Mr. Flynn. Motion by Paul, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Welcome aboard, Mr. Flynn. Bill Peck, Parks Commission, it's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. Expires March 3, 2017. Can I have a motion? Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Ann Marie Dragones, Board of Public Works, it's an appointment for a two-year term. Expires March 10, 2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Wait a minute.
Expiration date's got to change.
Yeah, no.
Hasn't changed.
Sorry. Hold on one second. Okay, it should be 12/6/15. Okay, I apologize. Ann Marie Dragones, Board of Public Works, it's appointment until the conclusion of this term, which expires 12/6/2015. Motion by Len. Second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Chris Adamo, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment until completion. Can I have a motion? Motion by Paul. Second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Ken Pereira, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment. Term is until completion. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Matt Bronson, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment, and the term is until completion. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Al, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Robert Finley, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment. The term is until completion. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Jamie Yak, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment. The term is until completion. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second, was that Karen? Second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Jim Geffert, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment. The term is until completion. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Robert Lang, Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. It's a new appointment. The term is until completion. I have a motion. Motion by Paul, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Commission on the Aging, Kathy Pagliaro-Rich. It's a reappointment. It's a two-year term. Expires April 2, 2017. Can I have a motion? Motion by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero one, and please note Mr. Bruno's abstention. Kim Osgood, Culture and Arts Committee. It's a reappointment. A three-year term. Expires March 21, 2018. Can I have a motion? Motion by Paul. Second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Michael McGaw, Board of Ethics. It's a reappointment. It's a four-year term. It expires April 6, 2019. Can I have a motion? Motion by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Kathy Verlich, 10-Year Strategic Planning Committee. A reappointment. It's a two-year term. Expires March 18, 2017. Have a motion to do so? Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Bruce Baker, 10-Year Strategic Planning Committee. Reappointment. It's a two-year term. It expires March 18, 2017. Can I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Jen Magory, 10-Year Strategic Planning Committee. It's a reappointment. Two-year term. Expires March 18, 2017. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 16, tax refunds and abatements. Nicole?
February 26, 2015, to the Board of Selectmen from the Tax Collector, the following overpayments of tax payments in total, $439.32 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated the 26th day of February, 2015. Dana Flock.
Thank you, Nicole. Can I have a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report as presented? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Everybody can just double-check. Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 17, transfers. We currently have no transfers before us tonight. Item number 18, we actually have a ton of correspondence. First is the minutes from the Ordinance Committee meeting. Put that in there for everyone to review. Next is a letter from a resident to Public Works, thanking them for their work during the storms. Next is a letter to myself, but there were also copies to both Karen and Nicole with regards to the Ordinance Committee, particularly the veterans' tax exemption. You'll also see a letter from Rich, excuse me, from Town Council, to Bill Zwick, Chairman of the Board of Finance, with regards to questions Bill had about the MSW contract and curbside recycling contract. Rich was able to address, excuse me, Town Council was able to address those. Next is a letter to myself from State Representative Conroy with regards to the 2014 ARP Legislative Achievement Award, which he was to receive. It was scheduled for March 5. Unfortunately, it got canceled due to weather. We're waiting for the announcement of a new date. Once I have that, we will pass that on. Another letter from State Representative Conroy with regards to House Bill 5462, having to do with the Connecticut Antiques Trail. A letter, or a note, I should say, to the town clerk from Jay Hatfield, resigning from the Conservation Commission. And let's see here, a letter from Chris Adamo with regards to a request to create the Seymour High School Softball Complex Committee. As you know, they, they're actively looking to raise the $265,000 worth of funds to do that. They asked to have a specific committee. I know they're working with State Representative Conroy to try to identify funding sources for that. I've offered my assistance just in helping them through the procedural part of their meetings, and Rory will be pitching in as well, though Rory may not have known that part of it. I just introduced him to that.
He does now.
He does now. And then there's the check registers as well. Okay, so that closes out our correspondence. At this point, we will move to item number 19, public comment. Is there any public comment? Come on up, Mr. Flynn. Or we can now call you Inland Wetland Commissioner Flynn? You've got a fancy, you've got a fancy new title.
That'll dime will get me a cup of coffee.
That's right. Yeah, that's right, where? Wanted to get you a cup of coffee at John's for that price, you know?
Okay, I'd just like to say one thing. What is the equipment, the nature of the fire equipment that's going to be retired, you know? You know, are they pumper's, or are they emergency service vehicles?
Um, I can answer during the recess.
Oh, all right. The only reason why I brought it up is that people from the Fireman's Museum in Ansonia would be interested in appropriating the equipment if the town no longer has any need for it. I know Bethany, they have the old Eagle Hose hook and ladder truck from Eagle Hose Company that was DX'd years ago. They sold it, I think, to Bethany. Bethany has to get rid of the piece of apparatus because it no longer satisfies up-to-date standards, but But the Fireman's Museum in Ansonia would be interested in appropriating their old vehicle too, so I would be interested if you could give me some information on that. Just one more thing, you know? I, conversations I have had with people, you know, for certain types of jobs that municipalities do, there are certain pieces of esoteric equipment that wouldn't be practical or feasible. And this is something for the Valley, Noggetuck Valley Council of Government, right? To take into consideration the formation of a regional equipment library whereby, say, custodial services needed some peculiar type of equipment that it would not be feasible for an individual community to keep in stock or would be too expensive, or say, some vehicle the Public Works Department would need. If we had a regional library where these municipalities could get together and buy equipment, keep it in the library, say, like the pothole machine, for instance, you know, something of that order, where you could go to this equipment library, borrow it for a certain length of time for certain jobs that you needed, then return it clean and in good shape back to the regional library. Might be something that we should consider. Because I know out in the Midwest, they have regional libraries. Farmers, certain types of equipment, harrowing equipment, or certain types of agricultural equipment, that an individual farmer would find too expensive or too, not feasible economically, but he might need this for certain specific jobs. He can go to a lending library. They have equipment libraries out there. Might be same food for thought.
Then I'll address that one during the recess as well, Mr. Flynn. That's a very good point you made. Okay, is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. How close is Warren? Okay. If you know how Warren drives, he should be here momentarily. Yeah, he moves it along, so. So obviously, we'll take a recess to wait for Warren. The question I have, Selectmen want to make their comments now or after executive session? Does anybody have a preference?
Well, I was actually going to defer to my colleague, Mr. Green, tonight. Let him go first.
Oh, so.
Yeah, why don't we do it?
Might as well do it now.
Want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Nope. I go back to work, so. Item number twenty, Selectmen's public comments. Mr. Green, the, Mrs. Stanek has punted to you.
The, I had a couple of comments, actually. One, I'm sure probably on most people's mind at this point. I was watching the news and there was a report detailing some of the DOT comments about how this is probably the worst year in our lifetimes, the potholes and the roads. I took a look at Board of Public Works minutes from, I believe, last night, and they indicated that they have been talking about it. I was wondering if, if we have a plan in place to deal with this, because I think this is gonna be a lot more substantial than we need to be able to deal with before. Just taking a ride up Remon Street, for example, which I almost feel like they should just, we should rip all the asphalt off, turn it into a dirt road at this point, it'd be safer. But, you know, a whole brick road, every road in town is a disaster, but there are certain roads that are so bad that I can't, I can't imagine that the pothole killer or cold patch or any kind of patching will actually address. So it's something I think that we need to take a look at in depth. I'm sure you already are. But I wanted to raise that point here tonight to potentially get you to address it, if you would like, because I'm sure some of the members in the public who might watch on television would like to know. And on top of that, something that, I know I called your office in my official capacity earlier this week, but I want to make it, make it known that whoever lives on the Uzotonic River, there is a substantial ice pack, there is a substantial snow pack up north, and that is gonna be a huge problem for us in the coming, probably in the coming week, particularly if we get the rainstorm that is projected this weekend. So if there are people who are watching, who live on the Uzotonic, be prepared, there may be flooding of a similar nature as to what we saw in twenty-eleven, which was, in some ways, almost historic in proportion. So I wanted to make that clear, that people should keep an eye out for that, because that is gonna be a problem. And our emergency responders, which I know that, this is why I called the office earlier this week, are probably preparing for that, but people should be preparing themselves for it as well.
I'll start with the pothole. Myself and Jim Galligan, myself and Tony, Tony and Jim Galligan, Tony by himself, myself by myself, if that makes any sense, have been out multiple times looking at the roads, trying to get an inventory. The problem that we face is we don't have nearly enough money to fix all this. You know, we, I think, this group had made a prudent decision to go after that five million dollars to try to put us ahead in our roads. Unfortunately, that is gonna fix the roads we've identified, that doesn't now fix the other roads. We're trying to put a plan in place to do that. Putting cold patch out at this point is basically spitting into the wind. That's a complete waste of money. So Jim is working up an overall strategy as to how we're gonna do this with regards to, Remon Street had a conversation with State Representative Conroy this morning with regards to sitting down with DOT to figure out how we're going to be able to address that road. I don't think it makes sense for the town of Seymour to put thirty or forty thousand into that road, which is what it would take to have it completely redone next year. Want to see if DOT is willing to do some work now, or perhaps speed up the timeline a little bit. Unfortunately, the plan is now within the engineers, and as we all know, it goes from one engineer to another to another, and then recommendations go back and it starts all over again. So if we could be allowed to go up the bid sooner, perhaps we can get that road done this summer. Roads such as Robin, if you've driven Robin Road, if anybody wants to have a good time. It's almost to the point, to your point, of we should just take a bulldozer and rip the top layer off and just take it down to the dirt, it would probably be safer at that point. How we're gonna address it, I don't know. One of the things, I met with Congresswoman Delora today, and that was part of our conversation, is there any way that we could do some type of emergency decree and get federal money in? I know that there is FEMA money that was available for the snowstorms and things, but unfortunately, there wasn't enough for Seymour to qualify for that. Tom Amy looked at every angle possible to bring money in. One of the things that Rose is looking at is can we include the roads in that? And if that's the case, then we would need to do that. Another, one of my peers brought up that we should band together through the COGS and do that. So tomorrow, I'm gonna reach out to Chairman O'Leary and see if that's something that he'd have interest in, and maybe all nineteen towns in the Noggetuck Valley COG put, put their requests in and try to get some funding. It's a long shot. Every town in Connecticut is, I think, in the same, the same boat. You know, obviously, you know, first of all, and Paul will tell you, we all talk amongst ourselves, and that's the biggest concern that everybody seems to have. You know, we, I put two hundred thousand in my budget request. That was for basic road maintenance, crack sealing, bring the pothole killer back. To be quite honest, we could spend two hundred thousand on just the pothole killer, and I'm not even sure that that would address all the needs. So I would expect by the beginning of April, we'll have a full plan in place. The other thing is with it getting warmer during the day and then freezing at night, we're actually gonna see more popping and more potholes being formed, so. Hopefully, by our meeting on April seventh, I'll have better, more concrete plan. And then with regards to the dam, as Len said, he did in his professional capacity. He did call the town, Tom Amy is aware of that, and he has his contingency plans in place should the need arise, we'll be ready to move quickly, should that happen, so. Anything else, Phil?
Good.
Thank you.
Anne Marie?
Um, just going on Len about the roads, I received several text messages from residents on Davis Road, that road, and I actually drove down it today before coming to the meeting. And it is like riding a roller coaster. And actually, a bus driver, I guess, was going around the corner. And she actually hit her lip on her steering wheel, so she bruised her whole lip, I mean, lucky. And I did bring that to Dennis's attention. He did have two guys go out there and look. There was guys trying out today fixing the potholes too. So Public Works is on top of it, and Dennis is made well aware, and just doing everything we can.
Well, it was just on that, Davis Road from Gary Park down to three thirteen is being, that's in the plan, that will be completely redone. The issue now is the other end. That, to fix that, is gonna be well over five hundred thousand. The problem that we're seeing is it's the laterals that are starting to sink. In working and talking to Jim Baldwin, one of the suggestions he made is the water company's going to put a water line, as an example. Generally, they are responsible for backfilling and patching the road. What Jim, what Jim's suggestion essentially is that we determine a price by square foot. So if it's gonna, we determine it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars, that, the water company gives us ten thousand dollars, we hire the contractor to do the work. So the town then establishes one person, like a, you know, a TIL con or an A and J or whoever it is we choose. They do all the work, so it's done to the town's standard. That way, there's no issues, no concerns, and hopefully, it lasts better. Davis Road, no knock to the people who did that, those laterals are probably fifteen years old, so, I mean, it's probably to the point where they're just starting to deteriorate on their own, so.
There's some more things. I know we've had a lot of snow this year, but I saw a lot in our, in my neighborhood, in our neighborhood, where we've had, people would have private contractors come and plow their driveways out, and the contractors would literally leave the snow in the middle of the roads, and the plow guys would come by and plow, and then the contractors would come back, actually leaving like a one-lane road on Tomlinson where you're going around. We really need to, the residents really need to be held responsible. If you're gonna hire a contractor to come and plow your driveway, they need to take that snow and move it off the road. It's against the town ordinance to throw that snow into the road. Also, there was a lot of chatter on the social media about sidewalks not being cleaned and it being the town's responsibility. It's really the residents' responsibility and the owners or the stores' responsibilities to make sure that the sidewalks are clean, not our Public Works Department's on some areas.
Correct. You know, one of the issues, the ordinance clearly says what it says. The responsibility is that of the, either the homeowner, the business owner, or whomever. The Seymour Police Department will enforce the ordinances when it's reported. We do not have the staff, the police department does not drive around actively looking for these things. But if a resident calls in and says there's an issue with such and such, Seymour Police will respond and address that, assuming they can find the owner. Rory actually had some, some good ideas today on some ways that we're gonna address it. We're gonna meet next year in September with all the appropriate people. We will formalize a more definitive game plan, and we'll have that in place and communicate that out to the residents. I mean, as crazy as it sounds, but with regards to blight, we put the stickers up.
Yep.
As Rory said, even if you can't find the owner, you stick a sign in the, in the ground, something, at least so that way, at least residents know that the town has responded, and the fines will start accumulating at that point. So we'll look at different things like that.
And it's also not just the residents. I mean, there's three, four closed homes in our neighborhood that people aren't living in, and so they had, the banks had the contractors come out, and the contractors don't care because they're just getting paid. So you really, who are you gonna go after? The bank don't go by, the bank does not go by the house.
Well, it would be the ordinance and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, that would go to the bank. The bank would be responding.
The bank decided, the bank's gonna pay.
But in, you know, and this is something else that we talked about, you know, it's hard to enforce an ordinance if the town isn't doing its part as well in certain spots.
Right.
So, you know, it's hard for us to point a finger and say, John Smith, you didn't do your sidewalk, when there were some town sidewalks that weren't done. Rory has identified every town-owned sidewalk, a piece of property in the town of Seymour, which Public Works now has. They have opened up all of those sidewalks. So now, I think, without being hypocrites, we can comfortably enforce the ordinance. Anytime there's a snowstorm, we have one employee who gets directly into the Bobcat and just does all the sidewalks. So we've actually gone a little farther than we should be going with the sidewalks, but in line with the whole TOD district mentality, we want to make sure that people have the ability to walk to downtown, so we've kind of extended that out a little bit further.
Okay, Al?
I mean, they've talked about the roads enough. They're, they're a disaster. They haven't got a plan for that. Bad shape.
Is that, yes, right? Stop.
Again, I echo the comments of Len and Anne Marie about the roads. Like Kurt said, we'll wait until the weather warms up, and then we'll see some of the roads will go down a little bit, some of the heaving that's going on. But with that last, well, the multiple storms we had last week, I was at the middle school dropping my son off in the morning, and I had, the kids get dropped off on the sidewalk, and the sidewalks were not plowed. And again, it's not a problem if these kids were getting dropped off at the front door because that's where they shoveled, but I felt for these walkers that had to walk in the road, to get, in between cars, to get to the entrance of the school. So then, school's done, I pick him up after school, and they had shoveled a little, they extended the sidewalk, but the problem was, I was one of the last cars now coming in, I just happened to be almost on the road. School gets out, I literally had children walking in between my car and the car, the car coming in, me and the car leaving, walking right in between a row of cars to get to the road. There was nowhere for them to walk, you know? And that goes directly to these custodians. It's the Board of Ed's responsibility, and someone needs to, or there's going to be, you know, there's going, one of these kids are gonna get hit.
Along those lines, I've initiated conversation with the Board of Education. We've seen a very positive impact with the merging, or the hopeful merging of technology. Rob Dwyer has not spent a tremendous amount of time on the town side, but he has made incredible changes to our technology. We've made some initial investments in that. We're trying to do the same thing with grounds and maintenance along those lines. You know, we've talked about whether it be mowing grass or plowing snow, shoveling sidewalks and things. Those discussions are ongoing. I wouldn't say that the Board of Education is a hundred percent on board with it. The professional staff is superintendent, director of operations, but the board itself has yet to take any official action. I had several conversations with the chairman, and he's in conversation with his members with regards to that. But hopefully, that's something that will happen in the coming months, and that's something that would help in that situation. A custodian with a shovel is a lot different than a Public Works employee with a Bobcat. And we can, we can do a tremendous amount. Here comes Speed Racer now. So.
Okay, that's all I have.
Wow, I did a lot of filling stalling for you.
You must have flown.
Woo! Little floor, huh? Paul?
Okay. I guess I'm sticking with the same theme here with snow rule. I mean, I know it's been a tough winter, and they've done a terrific job for what's happened to us, but there's a couple of spots that I'm concerned with. I know, I understand they did this downtown area, but, and I'm not sure whose responsibility is, across the street from the Strand Theater, where the sidewalk is, goes along the railroad tracks, is not done.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if that's the town's responsibility, Metro North, the state, I don't know, but that has not been done.
Correct. That is the state's responsibility, and that's one of the fine lines that we walk into where we go up, is if you look sixty-seven.
Yeah.
If you start downtown and you go all the way up to, to Claire's Village, you can see the spots that are owned by the state because they are absolutely not touched, all the bridges are not touched.
Right, that's another point. Across the bridge, you can't get to the crosswalk if you're coming down Bank Street. If you wanted to get, you know, if you're, if you're going back, you can't, and you can't cross the street without walking into sixty-seven to get back on the bridge, because that corner is so packed in with snow.
Yeah.
And I don't know about the sidewalk on River Street?
That's the state as well.
The state as well? Okay, because that hasn't not been done either.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we, um.
People might erroneously think that's our Public Works Department's issue.
Yeah, that's, you fight.
Maybe you need something on the website showing a map of what was the town's responsibility, the state's, I don't know. It's kind of unfair to have them take those darts. It's kind of unfair to have them take those darts.
Something we can put together?
Just a poll.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the thing you punt, and then, you know, you call the state, and they're not overly receptive all the time.
Sometimes a little public pressure to the state helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Call our state rep.
Well, we saw how impactful it was with the fence, though. We've got quite a positive response on the fence, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some of the roads, I just made the decision that we just need to do it, particularly up along 67. Public Works wasn't too happy about the decision, but, Paul, to your point, it's public safety. I mean, public safety kind of trumps whose responsibility it is. But how far do we go? When do we stop at that point?
Yeah, that's the thing. I mean, I really am amazed that you can't get to that walk button over there, and that's really a safety issue, you know, for people trying to cross that intersection. And I know a couple of times I've called to make sure that the James Street walkway gets done, because a lot of people do walk down to get to the train from my neighborhood.
Yep.
So, I mean, it has been done. Sometimes, you know, storm, they miss on a storm, but it gets done again.
Yep.
I'm sure that's probably on your list of town.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, too. You know, if we stay up on the sidewalk work, it's easier for the Bobcat. The problem we have now is they're behind on some of these things. It's so high, it's so frozen, it's so hard, the Bobcat can't move it.
Right.
They can't even churn it up. So, you know, with this map that we have in place now, every storm, it'll just get worked through. Hopefully, it will improve next year.
But again, I mean, this was an exceptional year. We know that, and not that it's an excuse, but it's...
No, no, it's definitely not an excuse, but it was, you know, sometimes all the snow at one time is better than storm after storm after storm, so.
I was hoping it was all in December.
Yeah. I tell you, the second week in January, I was wondering what we were going to do with all the excess snow punts, and how quickly that, how quickly that changed.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Karen, how's it feel to go last?
It feels nice.
All right. Maybe we'll switch it up for good.
Well, I mean, I want to be fair. I shouldn't go first all the time.
Ladies before gentlemen.
Oh, well, thank you.
Well, that's not even mine. That's not these two ladies. Yeah, never mind. That's one I'm not getting off of.
All right. I'm going to reiterate, and again, at the risk of beating the dead horse, the sidewalk in front of the former Seymour lumber is not plowed, and people who live up in that area need to walk down to stop and shop? And I'm not, that's a town property or state property?
Yes. Well, that's private property, but it's been open now for about two and a half weeks.
It is plowed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I went past there today, and it didn't look like it.
Oh, no, it's, the strip is probably six or seven feet wide.
Okay, all right.
It runs up, because one of the problems we had was that's cleaners. They would take the plow and just kind of jam it in front of Richie Sabaka's house. We had to explain to him that, you can't do that anymore.
Okay.
So, it's cleared up to just past the gray house.
Okay.
The problem is, we can't get the Bobcat up the sidewalk the rest of the way because of the guardrail and the fence.
Okay.
So, that would need to be done by hand up and over the bridge by Allen's Plumbing, but Allen's, John Allen does his part. And then you cross the street, and then you're back to a state bridge which isn't touched.
Okay. All right. And then the other thing, again, the condition of the roads, there is a huge pothole at the bottom of the high school driveway, and we all hit it, the buses hit it. It's huge.
I didn't know about that one.
You can't get up the high school driveway without hitting this pothole.
Can you make that note and call that? Yeah, we'll get that addressed right away.
Also, Stoddard Street, I don't know whether it's a frost heave or what it is, but I drove down there a week ago, and I thought the front end of my car was going to fall off. It's a huge, whatever you call it. And then, again, my road, North Benham, is terrible. Anne Marie? It's terrible. I mean, we're not the only road that's terrible. I mean, there are...
Laurel.
There are other roads that are terrible, but it's like almost every day, there's more damage to North Benham, and I don't think we're on the, I don't know if we're on the list.
And that's the biggest problem that we have, roads that were in good shape.
And now aren't.
That there's, I don't even know how we're going to prioritize all these roads. That's going to be the biggest problem, because there's needs everywhere, there's only so much money. How do we do that? That's going to be the toughest part.
Well, it's funny, because Dennis had talked to me about, why didn't I bring up North Benham Road? And I said, well, my part of the road is fine. He said the end of the road, which is a dead end, as you know, is in bad shape. I don't go down that. I go to my house and back. But now, my part of the road is terrible.
Right.
Just terrible. There's a frost heave right in front of where the Grange used to be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's really bad. I wanted to know if there's any progress on the little girls' recommendation about the garden?
Yeah, we've identified some land up around the high school. Actually, I was, I did the read of Dr. Seuss's birthday.
Uh-huh.
I read in her class, she came up and introduced herself, which was... So, yeah, hopefully, we'll have something for the spring or summer. The Seymour Land Trust is going to make land available to us. We're going to apply to Matthews for a grant. Alex Danka is, you know, as only crazy Alex can. Alex would like to have a greenhouse put up and do some type of program with the high school.
Oh, that'd be great.
And then...
That would be great.
Use the plants, or the flowers that are grown to be planted around Town Hall, and if we grow any vegetables, then the kids could have something at the farmer's market. The problem is greenhouses are expensive to build and then expensive to maintain. So, we're kind of looking at that. We may start with just a regular community garden and then add something like that. I'd also like to put a dog park there as well, and then potentially a five-acre solar reg, which would power, provide all the power for five town buildings.
Well, I did speak with Melanie Danka, Alex's youngest daughter, and I explained that we're very interested in this, so please don't drop the ball.
Rory's in charge of the, that's his project, so.
Well, I'd be glad to help out. I think it's a great idea. They have the garden down in Milford? They have the public...
Yes, they do. Yep. They have it in a couple of spots. Yeah, I was going to say, being a Paul, that's one.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Is that technically Eisenhower? That's part of Eisenhower? And is...
Well, I think so, I...
Book Field, near that, too?
Yes.
Book Field, yeah, right down the street.
Right.
Yep.
And then, we have a small farm. They put soccer fields on one side, and the other side, that carry back.
Oh.
Yeah, I feel pretty confident a project like this would be right in the Matthews wheelhouse, and we don't need tremendous money for it. It's more just the fencing and the water up there, so you'd be $20,000 or less, I would think.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
I can't believe a fifth grader came up with this.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it was a great...
There you go.
Yeah, it was a great...
And then, the last thing I have is just a compliment. Friday night, Seymour High School put on a concert. Josh Swets and his class, his music class, put on a decades concert that was one of the best concerts I've ever seen in my life. Now, this Friday is Diversity Day at Seymour High, and the kids are putting three more concerts on, three 55-minute concerts.
On Friday?
On Friday, starting at nine, I think it's at nine o'clock. I can call you and let you know.
Please.
It is fabulous. It goes from Johnny B. Goode to the stuff that I don't even recognize today. But they did Proud Mary, and I mean, what talented kids. Unbelievable, what, proud, I was so proud.
I saw, I actually saw a couple of YouTube videos of some of the things that they did. It was very, very impressive. So, no, please, if you can let me know, when else?
I will give you a call. I'll let you know.
I mean, I'll have to bring my music on ashore. Now, Bruno with me, because as Al will tell you...
Kurt might have to go to discover new music.
I have no taste in music, but...
None, zero.
Al seems to like groups that no one's ever heard of.
Go, Kurt.
Well, I'll tell you, they did, hang on.